Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. It's Tuesday, November 27th at 7:00 PM. We are in Town Hall. First order of business is a call to order. Kevin?
Kevin McCarthy here.
Paul Schuler here.
Ben Kennedy here.
Jack and Eily here.
And please join us if you'd like to in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are two agenda items. One was amended over the weekend and it's for 7:05 PM. It's a tax classification hearing, something we do annually. It had been advertised publicly for a number of weeks, so we needed to add that to the agenda. And we are also removing the item at 8 o'clock, which is the basketball court upgrades from the Recreation Committee because they are not prepared to present to us yet. So, somebody would move to make those changes?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience here for public comment on a matter that is not on our agenda? So, because it's an advertised public hearing and it's not scheduled to start at 7:05, we have to make small talk.
It's just a joke.
We could actually jump up and just approve the minutes if the boards would be ready to do that.
Sure. Change the agenda to minutes to the present time.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of 10-9, 2018, Board of Selectmen.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jack was the second.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for the Board of Selectmen, 11-7, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes for 11-8, 2018, Board of Selectmen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. And we're close enough that Mary can walk slowly to the table and introduce herself and explain to us and our...
Okay.
What...
I have a plan, I don't know if you want them.
It'd be great, please. Can we?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mary, closing purpose of this thing. Good evening. The purpose of this hearing is to allocate the tax levy over the property classes for Cohasset for fiscal '19. So, as I said, the purpose of the hearing is to review and to the issue of allocating the local property tax among the five property classes for fiscal '19, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property, of which we don't have any open space. Next page is the breakdown by class. So, in order to allocate the levy, we have to know what percentage of the properties are residential and which properties are commercial, industrial, and personal property. The majority of the value in town, which is now over $3 billion, it's $3,303,832, so we went over that $3 billion threshold. The majority of that value, almost 93%, valued by $2.7 billion, is residential. Commercial is $182 million, industrial is $1,006, and personal property is $27 million, representing a little over 7% of the 100% valuation. The next piece is, so that's the value that we're going to base the tax on. The next page is the levy limit calculation. We would take last year's levy limit, which was $35 million, add 2.5% to a per 2.5, which is represented by $892,000. We had our growth certified at $800,000. That brings the total levy limit to $37,380,305. The debt exclusions, which were $1.7 million last year, are $1.39 million this year. Add that on to the levy and the total amount that we have to raise through real estate tax is $38,770,531. So, that's the levy limit. We have 3,411 properties in town, 3,028 of them are residential. So, in order to determine the tax rate, we take the levy limit, $38 million, divided by the total value of $3 billion, comes out to $12.90 per thousand. If we wanted to do a, so I broke this, on this page I broke it out by each class. So, the residential class is the $2.7 billion and the residential share of the levy is $36 million. So, the calculations are here, just to prove out the $12.90 for all three. The next page is, we can shift the burden of the levy to the commercial class. Through the calculations, it's determined that the residential class has to pick up at least 96% of the levy. So, the minimum residential factor that we use, which is on this first column, is 96%. We take the levy limit, which is $38 million, times the residential class, which that indicates 36 million in the levy. In order for the shift to happen, we, the residential class has to bear 96% of that 36 million. So, that brings us to $34 million. Divide that by the residential class, we come out with $12.42 per thousand. So, the fact that the levy was reduced to $34 million for the residential class, the balance of the levy has to be borne by the commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, the calculation below is the $38 million less the $34 million, which leaves $4 million to be picked up by the commercial class, commercial, industrial, and personal property, divided by their value of $211 million, gives you a tax rate for that portion of $19.36. So, in order for the residential to bear relief, it's going to have a huge impact on the commercial. And with the amount of commercial we have, it would be difficult for the commercial property owners to digest. The second column is a calculation which the residential will have to pick up 96%, but we can split that anywhere between 96% and 100%. So, the exercise on the right is if we did 98%.
Yes.
The residential rate would be $12.68, less severe, less savings, I guess. But the impact for commercial would be at $15.96. Typically, a town would have to have 20%, 15% to 20% commercial in order to bear that.
Right.
The next page is an impact if we did go with a split rate. The first column, I did the valuations of $250,000, $500,000, $750,000, and $1 million. The first column is what the uniform tax rate would generate for a tax bill. The second two columns are with each of the minimum residential factor splits. So, the impact of the $12.42 versus the $19.36 for the commercial. On a $250,000 property, a resident would save $120 a year. However, the impact to a commercial property owner that's only valued at $250,000 would be $1,600. If you go to the bottom row, the million dollar value, a million dollar residence would save $480, but a million dollar commercial entity would bear an additional $6,400 per year on their tax. The last column, $12.68 and $15.96 would be the rates. Pretty much half of the other exercise that we just did. So, it's a huge impact for commercial and it's a savings for residential, but in a town, it's 93% residential. It's probably not the wisest decision. And then the last page, I do an exercise on what the average residential single family is. Last year, the average was $959,700 for residential, single family. This year, it's $978,800. The rate last year, $12.79, generated a tax bill of $12,274. With the proposed rate of $12.90 and an average value of $978, you're looking at taxes of $12,600, which is an increase of $350. The other piece is the debt exclusion is $1,390 this year. That, of that $12.90 tax rate, 46 cents of that is attributed just to the debt. Average increase for the $978,000 property, that's $450 attributed just to that debt exclusion. Any questions?
Yeah, just one quick thing. The average single-family valuation, that's average and not the median. So, the median, I think last year was about $7.58.
It's lower, yes.
Yeah, so people think, well, the average single-family home is a million bucks. Well, they're skewed towards some very, very high-end homes and a lot of right down the middle, so.
Right. And this is just a simple calculation. The residential on the LA4, there's 2,383 single families. The value is $2.33 billion. So, it's just a math calculation.
Every, yeah.
So, it's not the same as the median.
Just one thing I want to say is, you know, when we did our budget message in September, one of the things we did discuss and arrive at was having a uniform tax rate. And I think you made a case every year and this information's really, well, it's certainly gotten easier for me over the years to understand what it all means, but, so thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Yeah, at first I thought you were advocating a split tax rate, then I realized this is just the format.
Just showing.
Yeah, okay.
It's an exercise.
Just doing her work.
So, the average increase is $351 this year.
On the average value, yes.
On average.
Yep.
You know what the median is off the top of your head?
I thought it was $7.60, but I don't, I don't, I can't.
That's exactly, we were just talking about that, right around there.
It's starting to skew further. Some of the higher-end properties are pulling an average faster than...
And there are going to be some big transactions this year, too, that'll really skew it.
They have been a few.
Yeah.
Yep.
Probably.
So, the median tax was actually...
Less. Less than $12.10 or something, right.
So, new growth was $800,000?
Wow.
That's without a major, that's Toll Brothers wrapping up?
Yep. The commercial piece is extra space storage.
And then just new homes.
Just a lot of big new homes.
And that's really what pushed it, huh?
What's the average been on that for the last eight or nine years? It's been...
Growth?
Yeah.
New growth.
At $800,000, it's really low.
That's the highest I've ever had.
Yeah, several hundred thousand seems to me.
No, it's been in sevens. No, it's been in sevens.
The last two years, we hit sevens, and part of this is market trend, but it used to be more in the fours and fives.
That's what I thought.
And the plug number we use for our appropriated budget is like 400, right?
450.
Yeah.
And I try to be conservative.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's what I think to do.
Does the overall valuations only include taxable properties?
Yes. Well, exempt is separate from that in those calculations.
For example... Churches, arcades, town buildings.
Yeah, there's 257 exempt parcels, 178 million.
Okay.
That includes town.
Town, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yep.
These aren't really valued in a fair market value.
Right.
Just curious.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it's one of the quick things. So, for the median household at $7.58, which was last year, the average tax bill will go up $83.
That's different.
That's helpful.
That's kind of what the average homeowner...
All right, let's take a vote quick. I'm all moved that the average tax bill will only go up $83.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, no, 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 no. It was just a joke. Is there a motion to, on this proposal for a unified?
I make a motion that the 2019 tax rate be a unified tax rate at $12.90 per thousand of assessment.
We're actually not, we're not setting the rate. We're just allocating a uniform rate.
Oh, I'm sorry. I withdraw the motion. I make a motion that we accept the unified tax rate for the town.
Uniform. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're clear on the language?
Yes, uniform.
Unified, unified and uniform.
Yes.
So, I have, this is to submit in Gateway, you're only in the uniform, mine, and this is the only five.
Two of them?
No, I almost do two.
How much was that rate up or down from last year?
The last year's rate was $12.79, 11 cents.
11 cents.
And it may be, I'm not sure if it was $12.90 or $12.91 in the rounding, but it's going to be right around there.
We need to assign it.
Yes, that, that's the, that's the only five.
That's what you mean, which you're saying.
So, that gets signed a hard copy and then we submit it electronically through Gateway under Chris's name. So, the letter is for submission and the signature is for the uniform rate.
Validating the vote.
Okay, so... Assign this as validating the vote. And then do we vote again when it's, the tax rate is actually set?
No, so normally, when I came before you, the growth wasn't certified and the values weren't certified. This year, they're both already certified, so this is all we need.
This is great.
One and done.
One and done.
Good.
Thank you. All right, there's two documents to sign and then we can move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
This is number 15.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
I should have a cake.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, and I'm actually starting to understand it. It's number E. Okay.
No, no, let's take them, take them right now.
Yep, get them out of here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Hang on.
Thank you, Assistant Chair.
Okay, next, next, yep, next on our agenda is a discussion of the Cohasset Triathlon, which is scheduled for June 23rd, 2019.
Hello, good evening. Good evening. Hello, Bill Burnett.
Give us your story.
Tony Mohawk Way, hello, good evening. I met with the Sandy Beach Association and they concurrently approve the date of June 23rd. So, so you know that that's all been approved by Sandy Beach. Just today, Jen was able to organize a meeting with Chief Sylvia, Chief Quigley, Lord Gibbons.
Pam Bae.
And Pam was with us as well, as well, and they all currently approve that date as well. So, the idea is this way, like we've done last year's, I think it's done, worked out really well. I come before you today just to approve the date and the, you know, that's all set. But then I'll come back after we have a more formal meeting with the departments, come back and whenever it makes sense, just to our final, any final questions that you might have, any more details. If you think that's helpful, I'm happy to come back and do that. So, I'm coming before you to have the date of June 23rd approved, going back to the original course because Kindham Bridge is now, of course, working. And there are no other changes at all from what we've done in past years.
How many will be in the...
I put in the application 1,200 as an approximate time, correct, yeah.
So, one of the things on the event application, it says Sunday, June 30th instead of the 23rd. Was that just a...
That is, that is, that's a typo.
Okay.
So, if we can, if we can document the 23rd, that'd be best.
Okay.
When we do this vote here, are we approving the event or are we doing it next time?
The date.
The date.
I mean, just the date, so there'll be another meeting in which they'll...
If you're all filling in...
Is that what we do or not?
Do the logistics. It's a really logistics review.
Right, yeah, so, but there won't be a vote at that time. Is that correct?
Not unless there's something cookie, right. You know, we already have the insurance certificate. I mean, I do think if anybody has any questions about general logistics, and I have a couple, we probably should just ask them, air them now.
Sure.
So, one of the, one of the questions I have, which is not really a question, but it, just because there are people at home watching, could you, we are going back to the original course that you used. Could you just briefly tell us what that is?
So, for the folks, great, thank you. So, for the folks watching, it is a one-length of Sandy Beach. They come back to Sandy Beach, they'll go one loop, pass through Kindham Bridge, through North Situate, and then back up Main Street.
And down.
And, I mean, you're going to...
Yeah.
Should I do it again?
Nope, but they're on their bikes.
They're on their bikes, okay.
Right, and they go north Main Street.
Cedar, Cedar back, then around Jerusalem back into the beach. Now, the run will be going back to the original, that Great 5K. It's a three-mile course on the Inner Harbor, around Inner Harbor. So, it goes Jerusalem to Beach, it goes Atlantic to Beach to Maine, then Jerusalem and back in.
Okay.
I think last year, you brought the other one for the children's, then, is that the...
I want to talk about that. Well, I'd like to get your opinion on that before.
Yeah, okay.
So, just on the kids' one, we, that's not on our agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
So, I would love for it to be queued up for another discussion, not tonight, because it just isn't fair to people that might, in the public, that want to come and talk about it.
Understood, okay.
Okay. But you can certainly individually socialize, you know, or ask our opinions on things.
I'd like to do that. So, let's leave it like that. I'll, individual, I'll come to you all to get your opinions on that particular race.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the June 23rd full term on? Chief, do you want to weigh in on anything? You guys met?
We met. We had the conversation about the 30th versus the 23rd.
Okay.
The 23rd seemed to be a better date for most because it's a little bit farther away from the 4th, obviously, July 4th. There was also some conversation about trying to move it to sometime in September and both the police chief and the harbor master both felt that a June date was a better date due to the fact that they lose their summer help right around the end of August. So, it, they have their better staff to handle the triathlon if we do it in June. So, we're all in favor of the 23rd. And the route is, the route that Bill is going back to is one that we've used in the past, so we don't see any, any issues that we haven't seen in the past.
Great. Is this the 12th year or the 13th? You don't know who's counting. It's been a long time, over decades.
I think it's a 12th.
That's great.
It's a 12th.
Congratulations. All right, any other questions? Okay. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the date of Sunday, June 23rd for the 12th Annual Cohasset Triathlon?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bill.
She, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
Mark and Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a public hearing, so I'm going to read the notice. It's for a change of manager of Mr. Dooley's. Board of Selectmen for the Town of Cohasset will conduct a public hearing under Chapter 20, Section 56, as amended by the Chapter 79 of the Acts 1983, on Tuesday, November 27th, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the office of the Board of Selectmen. The purpose of the hearing will be to review the issue of allocating the local property, oops, I'm reading the wrong line. Sorry. Sorry. Should have read that earlier, sorry. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 27th at 7:10 PM in the Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, 41 Highland Ave. The hearing is to consider the application of Cohasset Pub Corp., DBA Mr. Dooley's Old Village Pub, located at Nine Depot Court for a change of manager. The proposed manager is John O'Brien. Public is invited to offer public input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. So, I'll invite the representatives for Mr. Dooley up. Please introduce yourself and then we'll ask questions and open it up to any public.
Hi, everyone. My name is John O'Brien.
Hi, John.
Sean Summers.
Hi, welcome.
Well, thank you very much.
Want to give us the, your story here? Just that you're proposing a new manager?
Yes, there's a change of management. So, with the change of management, we have to notify the ABC and the town and per order of the town, recipient for you, to introduce John as the, as the new manager. He's qualified, veteran of the industry, over two decades of, you know, liquor and hospitality industry above and beyond keeping standard eyes. I hired John myself. And we're here before you just to notify and to show that, you know, we like, we like to, we know that we have to change the names and come before you to ask for the approval.
Okay.
So, come before you, ask for your acceptance.
John, do you want to say anything? I know you've been there for already a couple months.
I've actually been there, I think, for four months.
Yeah.
I'm a fairly local guy. I live down in Hope. I look for somebody trustworthy, looking for somebody that's going to look out for other people, look out for the town's interests. I am that guy.
That's great. Board members, anybody have any questions for either John or Mr. Summers?
Heather's been holding the liquor license.
Uh...
The, there's a change of manager right now. Where's the liquor license at? That'll be who?
Yes. The liquor license is owned by my family. His name is Andres.
It'll be on, is on it now or will be on it if we approve it?
Yes, it will be, yes, sir.
So, Mr. O'Brien, have you ever had your name on a liquor license before?
I have twice, yes.
And where, where was that at?
The World of Beer in Cambridge and Ramona's MacGrady Grill in Redding.
In Redding. Have you ever had any complaints or problems with the license? Any disciplinary hearings or anything like that regarding the license?
No, not while I was the manager.
And I, you, you ruled, what did you do with the World of Beer?
I was the general manager.
So, I see that was like for a month. Beer.
Beer.
So... And so, as general manager, what did you do? What did you do as general manager?
I ordered product, inventory, hired, trained, everyday restaurant business.
So, as manager, if you came up with an issue in order to comply with the liquor license that required either an investment of money or, or any, anything else, say, under the license, under your job at Mr. Dooley's, would you be qualified and approved to make monetary expenditures to comply with the liquor license?
Explain monetary expenditures.
So, say, in order to comply with the liquor license, some inspector came in and said, well, you've got to do, make a $3,000 change to the back bar, whatever it is, you've got to invest in this and get a new upgrade of equipment or something. Would you, would you be authorized to do that under your, under your, as your position?
I believe I would be, but I wouldn't do it without talking with the Summers folks first.
So, you talked with them before you made the decision and, and if they told you not to do it, what would you do?
I would not do it.
Just to be clear here, are you saying that a town official comes in, tells him to change something? What, and there's monetary...
Well, pursuant, pursuant to the law, no, there's an average rate.
Pursuant, but what is monetary, pursuant to the law, a town official comes in, asks him to change something pursuant to the law regardless of monetary dominion, whatever it is. He references back to the Summers family that this town official has come in, instructed to change whatever it may be pursuant to law. How would your answer be? If they ask us to change something pers, to fall in code or to fall into the law, we would, yes.
We would comply with the law.
Okay. Right. Yeah, our concern from our board is we want to be certain that you have the authority. If there is something that is not in, within the scope of the liquor license that is not proper or legal, that you're willing to make the effort and command that it be corrected. So, that is in compliance with all the laws in the town.
Yes. I don't think that however much money is put against it, if it doesn't fall in your code or to your liking as, as a town.
It's a way to be, yeah.
The laws are more important than the monetary value to, in my eyes.
I was told.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I keep it that way, not to mistake.
It's to be certain there's independence of the, of the liquor license manager that they're able to, need to enforce the liquor license laws.
Actually, before you, it doesn't, it doesn't really sound as though he, he was always independent. The truth is, that's why I asked the question. And we've had other boards, other manager applications here before and the answer's been more, with more certainty, I'm authorized to do it and I'm going to do it. I didn't hear that. Just, I'm not sure what to do with that myself, to say the truth.
I, I don't think, you speak for yourself, John, you had your hand up.
May I?
Yeah, Steve, do you want to jump in and then...
First question is of Mr. O'Brien. I, I, it may help to clarify this. You've read the regulations since the original interview, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, as an example, a favored customer in the bar, but it's clearly, clear that he needs to be served no more. In the event that, no offense, that an owner doesn't want to offend the favored customer, but your job is to enforce the law and cease service, would you do it?
I sure would.
Thank you. That's...
It's my name on the license.
Exactly.
I mean, I know he can get in trouble as well, but it's going to go, the truck's going to hit me first.
The question's asked not out of any suspicion, but rather that our own experience is that we need to, need to ask that of any license holder, to be certain that both the license owner... Uh, to be certain that both the license owner, license holder and the owner of the establishment recognize that the license holder has a duty of care for exercising that license. That's the reason for it, okay? And I just, for points of clarification, the ownership of the license belongs to the Town of Cohasset, okay? You, you hold it, it's a privilege, and by the way, it's, it's worth noting that we have had, as a town, a, I think, a tremendously positive experience with with your establishment for many years that it's been open. We look forward to more of that. Um, I, I have one more question for you, Mr. O'Brien.
Sure.
As of the thirtieth of October, your name was still on the license at World of Beer. Do you know if it's been removed?
Uh, I have no idea what they've done.
No, no, I understand that, but it, it, it's something that you should be aware of because you would still be personally responsible.
But I actually, I called them June, beginning of June, and said that I wanted my name removed, and they said they couldn't remove my name until they put someone else's name on it.
So, is it still on there then? You don't know?
I don't know. Well, actually, I do know this much. They lost their liquor license for a few weeks. Because they never did a change of manager after I left. They've since been able to pour, so they must have put someone else's name on their license.
I would, I would humbly suggest that you might talk to council to make sure that you're indemnified from the previous establishment. Okay, we, we certainly want to know that you're only committed to the license here, period.
Well, wouldn't this have to go, our approval doesn't it go to a board?
The A B C C.
Because they're gonna pick that up, right?
Yeah.
Well, you would think, but there's no assurance.
Well.
Of course, we had to go back in time for the last one.
Right, and then, to be fair, the, the names do kinda stay on until somebody new comes in, but I think to Steve's point, you should make sure you, for your own sake.
Well, I mean, I think for our, for our own sake, um, we should make sure that.
Just for points of clarification.
His license is somewhere else. I mean, before, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna make certain that, um, the town is, is, clearly understands and it's identified that you renounce any responsibility for the administration of license at World of Beer.
Oh, absolutely.
No, 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 no. I, that's my point, but I do it, do so officially to the city of Cambridge and, please give us a copy. Okay.
On that point, that would be, I mean, we, I think the town should have just look out for itself, so, where I would address that would be is, I would have our police chief turn to us, this name is off.
Well, again, the, the name can, can only be removed by, at that point, I think it would be the, whatever the licensing authority is, the city of Cambridge.
Doesn't matter, but we, we would need to hear from our investigating officer that that name is off.
That is eventually how.
I'm not interested, and I'm sure the promises would be right, but the advice is good. I wanna protect the town, want the town, I want our officials to tell me that that license is off.
Would we have further liability?
Oh.
Chris?
Well, I, it isn't.
Yes, I know.
So, and you can jump in for a second, licensing clerk. The, um, he should be, he can't be on two licenses at once. As I understand it, you wanna be a license manager at one facility at a time. So, they wouldn't be able to process this through the A B C C if he's still sitting as the license holder. That said, that will be a problem. I mean, you can't be in two places at once, and you should, as Selectmen, several Selectmen have said, truly, who should be sure that you're not there anymore? Uh, because that would be complicated.
Well, I did, as I said, I tried to follow up.
Just write a letter to the city.
Yeah.
To Cambridge Liquor Control. And we've, we've, I mean, just to be, we've had people resign to us too. They sent us a letter saying, look, I'm, I'm out. I'm not the license manager anymore. Now, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be a surprise. It's the city of Cambridge, I hope.
One would hope.
One would hope.
And we can't change it until the application has been filed, which is the same with Cambridge. They would have to wait for that to be filed. So, what we could do is, on my cover letter, I can make mention to make sure that, that he, you know, you would do it as well, that I could also make a paragraph where, he was not removed, please make sure that he is, because he's going, you know, that we're.
He just needs to write a letter to Cambridge Liquor Control and they'll do it.
Right. But I, I do think you're right. I think in our, when we submit the paperwork for this to go to the A B C C, that we clarify that to Kevin's point on our own. Right, just to make sure, and also, we usually get the same, I'm investigator, I know him, I have his card, so. Yep. He'll reach out to us and, and as long as you do the same thing, then we'll get, we'll get it from both sides.
Well, and also too, you know, it's clear from the conversation, there's something wrong with the license there, and as, as Mr. O'Brien said, that didn't have to do with me. And I'm sure he's being forthright with us here on it. However, we have responsibility to check on those things.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with this.
Which part?
Well, that part right there is one, is, is that we don't know whether or not he's off of another license. We don't know whether or not, uh, what the conditions are that's going on there that created the problem with the license.
Can I, can I just ask a, a question of the board? Assuming, I realize this is a bit of assumption, but assuming that, uh, the the, the, the license at World of Beer is either renounced or, or changed by the current license holder, right? Are you comfortable with the application of Mr. O'Brien as license holder for Mr. Dooley's?
I certainly am.
Yeah, I'm asking the board broadly.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, I also think with respect to, you know, Summers Pub, D B A Mr. Dooley's, right now, the previous manager is currently on their license, you know what I mean? So, I mean, there, there is, there is a lag. I think the June to October lag is sus- is curious at best, but if they're functioning and serving liquor, I would imagine that there, it's just like an administrative lag. So, I am comfortable with this candidate and this particular business in particular, because of their track record, but but I, I agree that we should make sure that that information has been, you know, that we're comfortable going, you know, in the future that that's been taken care of. But I don't, that doesn't change how I feel tonight about, you know, moving this forward.
Okay. Well, yeah, what I'm, what I'm, the reason I'm asking the question is that, um, like to make some progress with it. I don't know that you could make an appointment contingent upon proof of dismissal.
I mean, we've been in the same situation, you know, I mean, it's just.
We've lagged some of these manager decisions, yes.
Exactly. I mean, why would, this is just.
Well.
Yes.
We, we have.
We have. I know, I just, we, we don't need to go there, but, yes.
Uh, actually, in most cases though, I disagree. We, we, we asked for, we asked for and receive, um, supervising temporary managers to handle the license, uh, spec- when, when the license holder requested their removal from the license in the past.
Correct, but their license, their, the name on the actual license as the liquor manager for the, whatever establishment, isn't actually changed legally until the next manager is appointed. Am I correct?
I am, I, I am.
That's how we get the proof from the A B C C. Yep, through A B C C.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, is anybody willing to make a motion? Is there any last minute, any other questions?
I have just one other question, if anyone. Um, Mr. O'Brien was not tip certified until recently. I'm just curious with your background, like at the World.
I have been tip certified.
Oh, you haven't. You just, that had the lapse done, not been done. How long it had been lapse?
Uh, that I don't know. But I've been tip certified for ten years, at least.
And, and, when did it stop? You don't remember?
I, I don't recall.
Is that something that goes every year, a couple of years?
Couple of years.
Okay. It's like this day, that ethics exam. Don't wanna mention any names, but.
It's like your license now, like you have to, you know, send out, this is your license.
Right, right. There are, are some amongst us that may not be. Um, okay, would anybody care to make a motion?
Yes, um, move that, uh, John, John F. O'Brien be approved as the liquor license holder for, um, Summers Pub doing business as Mr. Dooley's Town of Cohasset.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Oh, I won't nay.
Okay. Order one. Congratulations. Welcome to town.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay. Chris, you want?
Yeah, the next time was just a routine action that needs to be taken pursuant to the bylaws. So, um, we, we discussed some months ago, we looked at the whole year's calendar, the date for town meeting, the annual town meeting. Um, and April twenty-ninth is the day we have working on. That's, last year was April thirty. We're usually the last Monday, April the first Monday, depending on how vacations and schedules fall. Um, and by the way, so with this is also the annual town election, which is a continuation of the annual town meeting, which would be May eleventh, that'd be, that'd be the second Saturday after this. So, and even though it's not on here, you'll also be setting the annual town election at the request of the clerk from May eleventh. That's a, that's a follow-up, that's the continuation of the annual town meeting. I spoke with her today about that, so. That was just the standard, and this is the way the town is to start the voting, it's the second Saturday after the town. So, you'd be setting April twenty-ninth and May eleventh.
Town meetings at twenty-ninth, eleventh is the?
And that's a Monday night. April twenty-ninth will be Monday night at seven. The election is, you know, the standard time on Saturday. I forget the hours.
It's usually eight to seven?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about those dates? Okay. Is there a motion to set the date for a new town meeting on April twenty-ninth and the town election on May eleventh, two thousand nineteen?
Sounds good.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Complete Streets. Heat. Come on down.
How are we doing today?
Good. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. So, uh, hopefully you know how you want me to start off.
Yeah, so, I guess just kinda tell us what it is and where we're at and why and, um, I know we got a lot of materials, like forty pages of stuff. So, I, I imagine we're not, you know.
We're not gonna go through it all.
We're not gonna go through it all.
Uh, so just from a little background history, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, transportation bond built with the Patrick, I'm, I'm sorry, the Baker Polio administration put into effect, they created a complete streets. Uh, and it was a way for, uh, the intent of the, of the, of the complete streets is a way to reward communities who created partnerships with the state to develop safer, healthier, uh, multimodal transportation networks throughout the town, leading to better communications, I mean, I would say better networks within a region. And so, uh, they created the complete streets. It's also, uh, it's considered a community compact best practice along with, uh, the green communities effort. Uh, what they really tried to do is, in their first statement, is to reward communities, to work with the Commonwealth to create a better pedestrian access throughout sta- you know, city centers, access to schools. Uh, if you guys can remember, a coup- there were, a while ago, there was the old safe routes to school. Uh, and that was a funding mechanism to help promote sidewalks, uh, you know, the development of infrastructure, uh, you know, around schools in downtowns. This is a very similar effect, what they're trying to do. So, um, so what this process would do is, if the town moves forward uh, and the town currently has, uh, is in the steps, uh, we're using Howardside Hudson as a consulting firm. The town was awarded a thirty-seven thousand dollar grant from Mass D O T to create a prioritization plan. Uh, within the complete streets program, there's three tiers. The first tier, uh, is a, is a training of staff member. That would've been myself, and I believe Brian Joyce is also training within complete streets. I went to a day, uh, Mass D O T training seminar, uh, and learned about complete streets, the concepts and designs. Uh, and then also tier one would be, uh, the creation of a policy, and that's what was in front of you, uh, which was, what we're, which I'm here tonight to talk about. So, for the development and the adoption of this program, uh, there has to be a policy. Uh, I did draft a policy using a couple of sample communities. Uh, Situate, uh, is a complete streets, uh, has adopted complete streets, Halt. Uh, I would say three out of four of Cohasset's, actually, I think all of Cohasset's neighbors, I'm not too sure. Pingam has adopted complete streets, but I'm positive that, uh, Norwell, uh, Halt and Situate have all adopted, as long as, uh, in addition to Hanover, have all adopted the complete streets process. So, uh, so tier one is, uh, the training, which I've completed, and then also the adoption of a policy, which is a draft. Tier two is the development of a parters, excuse me.
Yeah.
Prioritization plan, which is underway, uh, and there was, and that is being paid for through the grant that was received by Mass D O T, which I just mentioned. Uh, upon completion and approval of Mass D, D O T, uh, and the adoption of the policy, it will open up the Town of Cohasset to, uh, apply for Mass D O T funds, uh, to the, to the tune of up to four hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, four hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, for the implementation of, uh, sidewalks, uh, and other complete streets, uh, tools. Uh, and this could also go to signaling, uh, redevelopment or the restoration of sidewalks in town, uh, to the implementation of warning strips, uh, if, if everyone has seen the little, uh, square, uh, I would say, they're kind of plastic tiles uh, at the base of handicap accessible ramps with the yellow bumps, uh, which are not, uh, which are currently not within the downtown ramps. Uh, all those elements could help, uh, pay for the implementation. Uh, in addition, complete streets funds can help pay for, uh, the improvements to handicap accessibility, accessible, uh, ramps uh, to town-owned properties such as Town Hall, uh, all the schools in town. Uh, and, uh, the number one, and with all this kind of being developed, uh, it needs to be listed in the prioritization plan.
Can I stop you for a sec, just on the prioritat- prioritat- prioritization plan? So, you're working with a consultant on that. Is there, is, how, how is that happening? Like, how are they figuring out what the priority is?
So, that is the, is, is the next, uh, element that I'm, uh, jumping into. So, uh, so right now, we have met with the team, uh, including myself, Chris, uh, Brian Joyce and E B W. Uh, and right now, we just started the public outreach process. And last Friday, there was a great article in the newspaper, which was drafted by, uh, Ms. Abigail Adams, who sits behind me, uh, and, uh, and it was to create the promotion of this. The number one, uh, tool that is being implemented right now is, uh, quote-unquote, called a Wiki map. Uh, and that's what you see, uh, I was gonna show it to you tonight, uh, with the computer. However, it's a Google-friendly, interactive map, which is actually, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I sent links to this last week in the, in the weekly update, and I'll send it out again this week. You click on it and you get to that screen.
I did it.
Yes. And then.
I had some problems. Roads that go like this, and you get the straight line.
And you can literally, I, you, you can actually then literally, um, wait, Pete, let Pete explain what that is.
Yeah, so there's a link, there's a link on the main website, on the main town website, uh, and it's a link to the article and also the Wiki map. Uh, and so it's a Google-friendly, interactive map, which is, uh, here to collect public input. And so, what, uh, I would ask of you and all of your friends and neighbors and all Cohasset citizens to go on and use the Wiki map and, uh, and really kind of identify issues, uh, that one sees. Uh, and, and the great thing about this map is you can all, you can identify points and you can also identify routes. Uh, and so, take the intersection of, uh, uh, of Depot Court. You know, one can identify that specific spot and say, uh, the, the crosswalk, uh, paint is fading and, uh, and coming up to the intersection, speed is an issue, uh, and I don't feel safe crossing, you know? And, and so all citizens can go and put their input, and then that's gonna be registered and, uh, and that's gonna be, help the town along with the consultants, Howardside Hudson, creating that prioritization plan. Uh, other, you know, other ways is, when I talked about routes, everyone knows, everyone likes to, you know, to, to cruise, uh, Jerusalem Road, Atlantic Road. Well, some people may think, uh, from a biker standpoint, cyclists, uh, you know, cyclists, uh, should stay to the left side of the road or, uh, a number of these issues is the chief is behind me, or stay home.
Please.
So.
Talk cycling, if we wanna really.
Correct, and that's what we're here to talk about. How do we create a safer network of streets? How do we promote a healthier network of streets? Where should, you know, where in town, such as Village, should we implement some of these policies? Obviously, you're not gonna take all the, the, the tools, uh, or all the design elements of complete streets and, yeah, and, and try to implement them on every road in town because it's not, it's not fair enough and it's really not fiscally appropriate and or appropriate from a, from, from all points of view. But, um, we're just looking to create safer networks.
Does this in any way, um, overlap with the discussion we had at our last meeting about speed limits throughout town?
It can.
Yeah.
It, it can.
I wonder, you know, those conversations should kinda take place together to some degree.
What's, if you don't mind me asking, what's the purpose for this tonight? Is it education?
Well, so, so the town needs to adopt, the selectmen need to adopt a policy, which gives general guidance. As part of the process. Doesn't have to happen tonight, but we have to start the conversation.
Right.
And so Pete's drafted, after consultations internally with the staff, and looking at other communities that already done this, a draft policy.
No, no, I, I, okay, fair, fair enough. The reason I'm asking is that that policy begins to reference a variety of other initiatives, none of which I've looked into. And my, my larger concern is while, you know, on the, on the back of great intention, um, we move forward. We actually end up hobbling ourselves by frankly tying ourselves in knots with other programs that have with them requirements that we're not ready to meet. And that's why I think it makes sense to dig into it. I was mu- much more concerned that we were being asked to vote on this.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no. I'm here to, uh, to introduce the policy.
Yeah.
Uh, to, to, to introduce complete streets, uh, and also to, uh, to introduce the Wiki map for public input.
The, um, uh, the, the one thing that I would love to see mentioned in this policy. Is actual enforcement of traffic and parking, uh, laws that we currently have.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, I can, I, I personally, it's been my, 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 my own cause for nearly six years now. Uh, we could do all kinds of wonderful things, but I tell you right now, we can make an enormous impact on the usability of our streets. For a variety of modes of transportation, if we would simply enforce laws that we currently have.
One of the things I think this program allows us to do, currently if I'm just remembering this, Pete, is, is, is better signage and, and things which help. People understand what the rules are and how it's, and it also allows for better enforcement by improving.
To a degree, but no, no offense, before you got your damn license in Massachusetts, one of the things that's right there in the manual is don't park on sidewalks. It's pretty straightforward, okay? I, I just, it, it, this is, it's pretty straightforward. Now, having said that, the reason I bring this forward is also a practical matter. And the practical matter is that we're a town that's relatively old and many of our street layouts are relatively narrow.
Correct.
So I, the one thing I didn't see in here, but I would hope is, is worthy of discussion at this point. Is a beginning of an, an understanding of what might be logical traffic flow. It is possible that many of our, our roads in town, especially residential roads, may need to turn in a single direction. With routing such that people can get to and from their homes. But it recognizes that the width of the road is not great enough to handle, handle many modes of transportation.
Yeah, other towns, uh, other towns face that battle, and there's a couple of examples in the communities. Uh, of clauses that can be built into the, to the policy that address those issues, obviously. Cohasset and a lot of other social communities are old and the street layouts predate, uh, automobiles, and so that is an issue.
Yeah, and, and interesting, just a couple of other things that would be, you know, I don't know, is the master plan, di- is this in the master plan?
So, so we, I would say one of the, so this came, actually, this was, came out of the development of the master plan. Uh, through the, you know, input in the, in the, in the public, uh, forums that the master plan has held. Uh, that, uh, Paul and Kevin kind of sit on. Uh, was the, the, the increase in the increased access to pedestrian, for pedestrians to the street. Uh, and so this is a preemptive, I would say a preemptive, uh, program that, that I, that I know, I knew about, uh, as a planner, I know Chris knew about it. Uh, and this was an opportunity that we jumped on because it was a number, it was, it was quote-unquote, I'm gonna say low hanging fruit. Uh, and there was a program out there to address these issues or the issue of infrastructure and sidewalks. And so, uh, this was a program that was acted upon because of the input that we heard from the master plan.
Just, just two things that I think, like, as this conversation goes further and, and, and please, if, if, uh, this policy needs some kind of set deadline, let's talk about that.
It's more, the policy, I hate to, to make it vague, it's more aspirational than you must do these things. The, 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 i- it sets, i- i- it's more of a, I hate to say that, it's more, it's more aspirational. And then the prioritization plan is really whether, to, to use a phrase, the rubber meets the road. Um, where the town says, yeah, these are the things you wanna do.
Right.
Sidewalks or, and again, this is all kinda come through you before that's adopted.
Like two, you know, just a couple of other things that I think we need to make sure, like, we have, we've done all these studies, you know, we talk about this all the time. We have a lot of data or initiatives that have taken place over the years, and to the extent that it makes sense to kind of pull them in together. So one of which was, we did a parking study.
Correct.
Through, with MAPC, maybe three years ago. Um, it seems like longer, but, you know, there were some recommendations in there, just in terms of, to Steve's point of parking and traffic flow and. And, and use of the village in particular, that we should probably reference as we delve into this. And another thing is, just in terms of aspirational, there's a lot of things we can't do for a whole lot of reasons that just aren't practical. Everybody wants a sidewalk on there, but now we just, we just passed and we're gonna go to special town meeting with a recommendation on, um. Help me out, the streets, the roadways, the scenic roadways.
Historic scenes.
So, you know, the minute you nail that down onto Beach Street and Elm Street and Jerusalem and Atlantic, you're now. Even though it's not impossible, you, you're limiting the opportunities that might exist for sidewalks or whatever.
Correct. And really, on some roads, they're, they're not appropriate, you know, some of these tools such as sidewalks are inappropriate on many streets.
Right.
However, but in the downtown of the Village area, connecting, you know, the two, you know, the schools and the scene, you know, local commons. Uh, together, uh, along, you know, sidewalks, uh, is, is a plus for the community.
Right. I agree. I just think we all need to understand.
And, and so one of the things, I, well, this first start, this didn't start in Massachusetts, it started, it's a federal thing. And so we looked at this in New York.
Is this federal money or state money?
Uh, it, it's state money, but it was a federal program that, that, that came out, and every once in a while, there's federal money, I don't think there's any federal money right now. Um, but the whole concept of complete streets, a planning thing that came, you know, that was coming out everywhere. New York did this earlier. And, you know, I, again, I had a, some of the parts of my prior community were very amenable and some were not. Um, one of the things that concerned me when I came here was that it was more of a, when it started, it was more of a one size fits all, and it's like, well, we're not Arlington. We don't have sidewalks everywhere, we can't do that. But it's, it's adapted, so this is not about making you look like Boston, it's about improving safety in a way that fits the community's character. So.
But that's the overarching goal of the program, is to increase safety?
It, it's to increase safety and access, so, so if you're gonna have bike.
Excuse me, did you say access?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So it's to make sure that there's mobility access, you know, that there's ramps and things for people where they need to be. Where sidewalks are, are appropriate, that you something you wanna look at. It could just be something as simple as signage and markers on the road to remind people that you share the road with bicyclists. You know, i- i- and there are way, so it's, it's about thinking about the roadway system. Uh, or the, as an interconnected way for people to move, not necessarily with four-wheel vehicles, it could be bicycles, it could be scooters in some communities. I'm, I'm not looking at that here, so, um, s- and, and again, the, 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 the. The, the, at the end of the complete street rainbow is an annual pot of four hundred thousand dollars for each community that you can go after. To implement things that the community decides it wants to do. And that's not gonna build much sidewalk. But it could do some improvements in certain areas, it could do signage, it could do ramps, it could do, you know, there could be a lot of safety, it could improve an intersection with some, you know, uh, better visibility.
Other these downsides.
Yeah.
Numerous things, numerous tools that can be added, uh, to create a safer, healthier, uh, I would say more diversified.
So the idea of this policy would be that we would develop a town policy, almost like a fiscal policy, but in the realm of access to streets.
Correct.
And that'd be a policy for how our streets and sidewalks would be conducted.
Correct.
And as part of that policy, we're also gonna have priorities.
So the, the policy stands on to them.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's a prioritization plan which is developed, uh, and that is being paid for from Mass DOT. Then that plan is approved by the state, and then on an annual basis, the town takes that plan and applies for grant funding. For the, for the implementation of that.
So this then becomes similar to our energy savings program that had a plan like that, then they brought it to the state, so that. Now, do you have to have the policy first before you have the plan?
Yes.
So and then you can take the plan and then if we've all agreed, the town, it seems to be a town plan that, I don't know how that gets approved, the selection of the town. And, but then it goes to the state, and you can access things similar to like, help with the grid, electrical stuff that we got recently.
Correct. For example, the number one, you know, one of the things that we hear on the, uh, the Master Plan Committee hears is that, uh, there should be a pedestrian, uh, net, uh. There should be a sidewalk linking the T station and the residential areas of the town.
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, not interrupt you, but, and from the master plan, we had huge reaction in our forums. We did Facebook postings where we got input from thousands of people, well, a couple of thousand people. And, and from, and then from the forums and the public input on the boards and so, at any rate, the streets and so forth. Access is, is just a very huge issue in this town, so, for what it's worth.
From the citizens, you're saying?
Yeah, from citizens, yes, I, right up there with, uh, dare I say, the grid, you know, there, this is, it's a real concern that people wanna have access. Because it's a mobile town, they wanna walk, they wanna bicycle, they wanna walk the train, bicycle. I mean, it's, to me, to me, it seems like it's many ways good for a community, but I'm prophesizing a bit perhaps.
So, so, so this policy gets adopted by the board of selectmen and goes to effect. This, and it's being done kind of in parallel with the, the beginnings of prioritization plan, so we're getting, you know, resident input at the same time. This, like, when I adopt this, when the, when the plan is, when there's, there's some public meetings, the board then has to say, yes, this is the prioritization plan, and that's what goes for.
Once we adopt it, does it go beyond us to the town?
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, it, it goes to the state.
Of course, they say once we.
Yes, this is, this has to go to town meeting.
So it seems, it seems like in the future, what we'll do is have a meeting where we break this plan down, take a, take a look at the nuts and bolts, right?
So do we have to renew this plan every year?
Nope.
Once it's done, it's done.
It, it probably, you know, you, we probably shouldn't look at it from time to time to make sure it's still applicable and appropriate. Uh, I mean, I don't think, it's not like we're looking at, I don't think that, in some areas, you can change borders, Masters does change borders, so it's, I don't think there's much, you know, and I don't think our. Development plan is gonna change radically because the land is what it is.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. I mean, is that coming from the state appropriated budget or is it coming from the feds?
It's coming from the state. It's a, to, it's a bond bill, and this is.
It's a bond.
Yeah, correct. It's a, and it's been a successful program, it's been implemented. Uh, I'll leave this with you, I'll pass this along so everyone can take a look at it, and it goes down the list of communities, right? Uh, in two thousand, uh, eighteen, there were, I believe, twenty-four communities that received, uh, I would say ninety percent of them received. Uh, six figures, uh, for the implementation of complete streets in the town.
Something, something regarding.
It's a, it's a tool that can help the town, uh, when implemented to create safer, healthier streets, uh, for the citizens.
How, how many towns have adopted the, uh, complete streets, do you know?
Uh, at the top of my head, I do not know, but I can get that figure for you fairly easily.
Okay, I'd just be interested. It's a fair number, I've, I've done this now, um, it, it started in the, in the inner ring suburbs and cities more, but it's really, it's spread a lot further. Because they've, s- they've made this, you know, it adapts to what you want as opposed to someone telling you to put a sidewalk somewhere.
Wait, it, to, to what extent do you want commentary? I mean, you could load the boat with comments on three A.
Yeah, I don't know that it's a good.
But it's not one for three.
Three A, yeah, three A is outside of the scope because it's a state highway.
Yeah, it's, it's, the only, the only catch to this is that complete streets is about your roads. We have two state roads, three A and two twenty-eight. Um, the master plan can address those, but complete streets can't, because that's funded through the state in a different way. Doesn't mean we can't advocate for them or identify issues in there. But the complete streets.
So if we wanted to build a sidewalk to the metro station.
On three A, we'd have to work with the state, that's not a complete street.
Just, I'm, I'm doing that for, now, if we wanted to do it on North Main Street, we could potentially use complete streets.
Correct, and just for example, real quick, the town of Norwell, uh, for the Main Street sidewalk installation, which is along one twenty-three, I believe. Uh, they receive two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, another, uh, town in close proximity, uh, would be Milton, uh, pedestrian transit enhancements. Uh, three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars they receive, uh, this is tier three money. Uh, and, uh, those are the local communities, uh, but within metro Boston, I would say, uh, a great number of communities. Ashland received, which is a similar community, uh, regarding population, uh, three hundred eleven thousand dollars.
So they're not asking for zoning changes, they're not asking for changing the charter? They're just saying, adopt a policy, make it safer or more accessible, and we'll provide money as long.
And, and make a list that you agree on, and then we'll fund the list.
No strings attached.
Yeah, I mean, it's true, you know, we'll say it's vague.
I mean, you have to build a, you have to build the state standards, but, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 but I mean, you know, if the money ran out, we wouldn't be obligated to maintain.
Nope, this is, I, again, it, it, so long as it's funding, you can apply for it. Now, it, this does interlock with other state policies, so for example, if you've adopted complete streets, because you're a leg up, if there's a, if you wanna go after, you wanna build a, 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 a sidewalk, you know. Theoretically, let's say you ran one up Sawyer Street, and you wanted to connect over to Avalon, well, then you say, well, we're doing our part, you need to do your part, it all fits the state's.
Let's, let's back up for just a second and take on a real project that exact, that exists. Cunningham Bridge is now reopened. Um, we asked the state for a rethink at a late date on railings. They came back and said, okay, we'll go ahead. I think everybody looks at the bridge and likes what, likes what came out of it. The town bore about a hundred thousand dollars of cost for, I think, some engineering work, right? Under this program, had we adopted it, might that have been something that we could have applied for, um, as a, as a grant? The hundred thousand?
For engineering?
Because it does, your, your brief does point out that it also applies to tip projects, which this was a tip project.
It does. Correct, and also money can be used and supplement with chapter ninety money to implement these policies, and so it can be added on. So I believe you could, but I can double, I can check in with that.
Okay, so a second, a, a second question then, along with that. Would, would this application, assuming that we adopt the policy and therefore had the access, had access to some state funding. Could it be used in some way, shape or form to help us organize, categorize and identify what is and isn't the public way? What should and shouldn't be a public way, uh, such that we're, we're actually giving some clear-headed thought to our prioritization for streets?
I can ask the consultants and to see what other towns have used the money for, uh, but, uh, I can just do some further research. But, uh, that's, that's.
It should be pretty accessible, because, I mean, Situate has a third of their roads public, uh, uh, private ways.
Correct.
Um, Norwell's got a whole bunch as well, so.
Correct, a lot of, a lot of towns face the same issues as Cohasset, so I can look into that issue, I know it's a, it's a hot topic here. Uh, and I can, uh, see how other communities address that.
Okay, well, under the, and under the safety piece, and I did bring it up, we've, you know, one of the things we briefly spoke about was the, the, you know, the possibility that, uh, you begin to look at traffic flows. I know this has come up in the past where, um, fire apparatus leaving the station and heading roughly northbound. Um, it completely occupies our street.
Correct.
All right, and then has to make the turn and, you know, we'll be the poor soul that's coming southbound on South Main Street at that point.
Get a cup of coffee.
Well, at that point, they're headed for the fence.
Yeah.
Um, so, the, the reason I bring it up is that, again, eh, when we think of safety, I mean, there, there are overlays of it. One of, one of them is the response of, you know, of, uh, of, you know, of our public safety vehicles. Based upon where their station is right now, I would think that this is finally an item that may trigger that examination.
A hundred percent.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, so a couple things, the, some of the funding comes off of, uh, the roll-off of debt that the state has and has incorporated into the bond, so that's where some of it's. Uh, but the, the idea is that the policies will guide what the plans for the town are. They're not, they're not handcuffing you to any given idea, but the, the whole concept is to try to make it safer, so. One-way streets is one option, uh, bike lanes, paving, uh, you know, roads a little bit wider or putting striping. Um, as well as the signage is a lot of the, the overlapping options that are there. It's fairly, um, I wouldn't say it's, it's vague, it's fairly broad on the application of policies, once you get into the implementation. So you can, as you say, a lot of different aspects that are local and are very community-based and, uh, locally based that would be available for the town.
Go ahead.
No, what I was gonna say, what, what I would ask is that, if there are any direct comments or thoughts, if we could just pass them back to Pete?
I, I've just given you seven on, on the Wiki map.
So, right, I would.
No, it's great to get the input, uh, earlier today it was only four, and so hopefully we'll get a couple of, a couple of hundreds.
Was mine on there, you know, because I had trouble with the.
If anyone needs tutorial, Pete can, Pete can help you.
But, um, just, 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 just a quick wrap-up, if, if the selectmen would each, you know, make a point of taking a look at the policy. And just kind of making notes and thoughts that come to, to mind, and then we'll have another discussion about it soon. My, I, again, I, I wanna make sure that whatever we talk about with this, because some of the, the buzzwords that I pulled out of the policy are things that I'm like. Ooh, was this part of the master plan? Did the master plan, I did? So I wanna make sure, and I understand that you're involved with both. I wanna make sure that these two documents are talking to each other, even though one's a big master plan, but we've been working on it for a year.
So why don't you schedule, we'll schedule time to go through it.
And, and, yeah, so.
And, and again, the, one of the reasons we've. And, and again, the, one of the reasons we're, we're taking this up now is because, once we get into like January, February, we're gonna be pivoting right to town meetings, so. The goal is to maybe address this by the end of January, so we can move on to other topics.
So, yep, if everybody would just take a look at that, and we'll, um, queue it up as soon as maybe the new year.
In addition, I'll send along example communities such as Hall and Situate and, and Norwell, just to give you guys example, just to give the board example documents that, uh, other towns in the area will welcome.
Right.
And in parallel, you know, go to the map and, you know.
Well, yeah, do that, everybody will hopefully do that as well.
Red X here at Beachwood and Prey Road.
I think they're on the town.
Stay away from that. That's permanently etched in there as, as a priority. Um, so, just kind of segueing to, um, a discussion of Town Hall a little bit. Um, Chris, do you wanna walk us through the, where we're at with the Warren article, and are we inviting Jason Akop, because he's here early?
So, um, so this also goes with along with town meeting in general, so you, you all have now the draft, and I'll send you electronic versions. Uh, this is the draft motions, um, and they should have, so. Uh, and, so, um, this is Article Six, uh, which is broken into two pieces, uh, this is capital improvements. A is the things that have already been voted on, reviewed, and A and B is, uh, the proposal has moved that twenty thousand dollars be appropriated to be spent by the town manager with the approval of the board of selecting for the purpose of purchasing certain items or services relating to capital and property except for below. That's just the general lingo, the specific is professional services, design and bidding for roof repairs, replacement, town hall. And the source is left blank, because one of the conversations I've had with capitals, what can CPC potentially support this? The answer is yes, but the first step is that select have to say, yes, we're good with this. And then, I can then go to CPC and say, hey, we consider this, we can set up a meeting, or see if they can get a meeting together and seek it. The alternative, we do have some free cash, you can come out of free cash, and the third alternative is the capital reserve, uh, capital stabilization. Um, so there are three potential pots of money for the twenty thousand dollars, uh, and we're not even sure that it's gonna be twenty thousand dollars, that's, that's Jason's best estimate at this point.
How much was the estimate, I apologize?
Twenty, twenty thousand, that's a, that, that's a conservative number that should leave us cushioned.
So, why don't you, could this policy be started?
Let me, let me, let me pivot, I, I could, let me, let me, let me pivot to, everyone knows Jason Federico's a, a field engineer, uh, and, um, many other, wears many other hats depending on the date, the time of day here, so.
And has become our internal Town Hall expert.
Yes.
Uh, started as far as, like, engineering, as soon as town meeting's over, we could get, uh, and if this is the game plan, we can start the, our, whatever the process of architecture, but we can get that started as soon as town meeting's over. So, we, the game plan would be to have the bid completed and in hand prior to spring town meeting. So, we'd have a number for spring town meeting funding.
Any potential repairs of the roof would not be done this winter?
No, it would be done after.
After town meeting?
Yeah, and if we did it, we could either do a special at the annual, so they could start as soon as.
Well, we did at the annual, yeah.
Right, but this is to move the ball forward, because we're gonna have to do design and engineering anyway to come up with a proper bid presentation, right, or, you know, in terms of what we really want.
So, while, so, while there's, there's a much more conversation to have with the board, uh, and, and the, the consensus seems to be that the historic structure needs to be preserved, and people want it preserved. So, uh, there was also, even though there's other things that need to be addressed, and we've already started to talk about the other issues in the building, the, 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 the question was, is there a path that we could start something? The project that could be done, independent of anything else, is the roof in the old town hall, because that building's not gonna physically change, at least dimensionally, uh, on the outside. So, the roof project is something that's critical to preserve the building, because the roof has to be replaced, and it protects the asset. Um, and in order to get there, you could, so you could do that independently of anything else, that was, that was, that was the consensus, echoed out of some conversation. Uh, because other things start, once you start to unravel all the parts of the building, you start to go down a, a rabbit hole with many other projects that have to be done. And, and this, um, allows for that process to begin, and you could hit town meeting, regardless of, if there's other thi, if there's other things to TF, that's great, they can all be more put together. But this will allow the roof to be redone as early as the spring, or, you know, late spring, early summer.
Chris, that was too simplistic of a question, but it seems like, you know, we did spend, obviously, a lot of money on the last design, which had the whole solution. I know this is probably simplistic, but we couldn't have used the design, whatever that was, for the roof there, for this, and saved the money?
There's no change in the roof itself, it's just we need a, a spec and a, a set of bid documents, basically, so we need specifications and a, and a, and a plan.
But we didn't, we didn't get into that detail in the last thing, yeah, that would be doing this, and there's no, you see no danger that in doing this expenditure, if we come up with a big holistic plan, that that would make this redundant. Or, you know, eh, eh, one where the holistic plan says, well, this was nice, but now that we have this to get the twenty thousand dollar thing, and we.
I mean, you're always gonna have to put a roof on the building unless you're.
Taking it down.
There's no other, I mean, unless you're gonna cut part of the roof off and do something, but I don't see that, nothing in any of the plans to date has been.
Has ever changed, then?
Do an addition that would come in in a dormer on that roof, it was all just below the roof frame, uh, modification.
So, so one of the questions, and, and I'm not blindsiding you, because I brought it up earlier, um, one of the questions that somebody in public said is, why wouldn't we just be going for the whole roof project? And your point was?
One, there's various what the estimate of that roof replacement cost is, so what that number should be is a question. And then, two, realistically, probably wouldn't get done any earlier, because we're not gonna start now. And then, so if we could start in March, is that the best time to be to put shingles on a roof? There, there's debate of, it's better, the warmer it is, the better it is time to put shingles on, because they need the heat to, to stick together.
So, what, so basically, we would be likely doing this project anyway in May, which theoretically we could be doing. If, if we have all the bid documents, all the bids back, we pick a bit, and then we just go for funding to town meeting.
And then I have an exact number of what it costs, not, my estimate is X.
And the roof, as you, as you point out, you couldn't even come up with a, a guess, within, you could be off a hundred thousand dollars, quite literally, right now, without the design and engineering that we're asking for to move, to advance the roof.
This also includes, this, this wood preservation work, I mean, it is, there's historic pieces as well that have to be fixed, it's not just putting shingle on the roof. There's insulation that needs to go inside, um, and I think there's some gutter work and all of that.
There's the gutter's downspouts and all that stuff, so then, the fascia board, what needs to be done there, and all that kind of.
And again, all of that would happen anyway, no matter what we do, Paul?
Yeah, so, the roof currently, it looks like there's a few exits for the roof, some of that is from the heating and, another one is the cupola, which blew off in the storms. Um, now, would that necessarily, let's say you put in a brand-new heating system, that is, for example, which I looked at, geothermal.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, there's no exit for any vent for heat or need for that. So, now you've got a vent, you replace the roof, but the vent has got a hole in the roof, and you're going to remove that vent. Would you have to then re-engineer the roof?
No, you just, you can patch the roof for that, but we are planning on, I believe, removing.
So, you, so you, you do the roof, then you patch it?
Yeah, I believe we are planning on removing the cupola.
Right, no, I, I think you probably have to.
I'm just saying, as, even as part of this, I believe we are gonna seal off the.
I mean, that was originally an, an old air conditioning duct in the days before there was air conditioning.
From everybody says it has been used in fifty years, so I'm gonna assume it's not gonna be used in the next phase.
But, I mean, but the hole is, is still there.
The big hole's still there, so that will be all sealed off, that piece at least will be sealed off, some of the other issues. I, if there's a vent up there that would get sealed, it could be addressed.
I'm just looking at it from the point of view, if you, if you change the, the general engineering of the building, and you're talking about the need to have a hole in a roof, oh, there shouldn't necessarily need one, because patching it has its own.
Yes, it will.
Consolation problems. If you're going to put in an engineering project that would, let's say, have individual HVAC in that old town hall, and one over here, you probably need a vent. Let's say it's a single for the whole entire building, then you could potentially have a, a completely hermetically sealed roof and protect the, you know, protect the assets better.
Yes.
Where you've got a hole now where the cupola was, which is patched, and you have another one which, if you fix it, and the vent that you're gonna take out and redo the heating system, you patch it again, that's, you know, again, has its own consolation problems.
We could look into that as we're doing it too, as far as, if there are, I'm not sure if there are vents up there or not on that, the historic part, and what they're, I'm assuming there's some for the bathroom.
There's a chimney, so.
Yeah, well, the chimney, the chimney would go, but the chimney's on the side of the building, so there would be, there might be an extension of the roof at that point to, to, to fill that out. But the chimney's gone, I think, in every plan moving forward, uh, because it actually needs to be repaired, it's falling off, so.
So.
But there's, there's a couple of vents up there, you know, that's, again, if you have to patch it, you know.
Yeah.
Well, then there.
I, I don't think the patching affects the integrity of the roof at all, right? It's, if it's done correctly, it won't affect the integrity of the roof.
Or you could seal the, you could cut the pipe close to flush and then seal the pipe versus.
But it'd be different than putting a nice rim on it and seal it.
Yeah.
So, the, the, what we need to decide as a board tonight is, um, whether we want this, we're not recommending this, but we're, you know, whether we want this to be, um, discussed by advisory and, and capital budget, um, made, and have them make recommendations to us so that we can recommend it or not to town meetings, so.
Have they, have they not done that already?
No, because we haven't advanced to this article, so, but they have been involved in general discussions and have discussed it amongst themselves, but they don't have a motion to work with.
I think it's fair to say that there's a consensus that this is the right way to go at this point, provided a selectman says no.
So, I mean, by putting it on the, um.
It will not be controversial. Yeah, it's on, it's on the warrant now, the question is, are you ready to go, go and say, give us your opinion, so we can vote on this?
Yep.
Which we would do what, before town meeting then?
So, they, uh, both advisory and capital budget have meetings scheduled over the next, you know, ten days, and they will have their recommendations, which they will give to us, and we will, based on those recommendations, make a recommendation before town meeting.
At this point, you'd probably do it the night, unless you want a special meeting.
The night of.
Yeah, we'll do it the night, the night, yeah.
No, because we're, we're dropping another meeting, there's a couple meetings in there, um, so, if, um, somebody would like to make a motion to include this article on, um, for town, special town meeting.
So moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so, so it'll now go to capital budget advisory, they'll have their recommendations, and we'll discuss again.
So, you don't need to vote, but i, i, if you could, if, I'm gathering there's a consensus that I should go to CPC and seek funding?
Good question. So, I, personally, um, I think this is a small enough amount of money that I would, I don't wanna piecemeal CPC, because I.
We can, I mean, I don't wanna tap free cash any more than we need to, but it's there, so.
Let's just do it.
That's probably the simplest answer.
That's, you know, that's what I think, I mean, I know this is CPC eligible, but, but.
We're gonna use CPC for a lot of projects this year.
And I see that is not a source of this kind of thing, but really looking at big holistic renovation, restoration projects, and I would rather present it that way.
The money's there, so, I, our sound thing, consensus, that we'll just, I'll, I'll plug free cash in, and I'll, that'll, there'll be no debate, uh, but, of course. And by the way, just so you also know, the, the acquisition of the real property is also free cash, but.
Okay.
So, that should change the vote, that we need to have from a, from a two to three?
No, 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 because it's a different amount of money, so, it's coming, I, it just, yeah.
Yeah.
So, no, this, it's, it's actually only, you're only fifty percent.
Fifty percent for that?
Well, fifty plus. Fifty plus one.
Um, okay, so, um, the other thing about Town Hall is, and I, I, um, apologize upfront that I literally just got this together in, in a for, of a forum, is I, I want to give this to everybody to, to look at. Um, and it's a very big-picture kind of schedule, if you will, um, well, I, I use that, the timetable is better, um, for the Town Hall project. Um, we had a, I, I keep calling it an ad hoc group, um, which are the chairs, Mike's chairs, um, discuss Town Hall, um, over the past couple of weeks, and, um, I think that committee is, is good to keep us all in, on the same page about what's happening, and one of the things we discussed tonight is having a meeting on, um, Wednesday, December fifth, which is next week, um, that's open to anybody and everybody, um, and the, I think, um, we'll have to figure out who kind of manages it, whether it's a posted selectmen's meeting that would, that, um, we manage, but to basically discuss the function of Old Town Hall. Because I think that's the one topic, one thing that got in the, we just didn't have enough information or enough backup to make a case about whether we wanted to put offices on the second floor or not. And we have to have that conversation about what the possibilities are in terms of use for that old, Old Town Hall building, and where we wanna go with that, because that's gonna then determine what we're gonna do, and what this annex section might look like, um, whether we're, whether we can renovate, or whether we actually really do need more office space, and the size of the building will be impacted. I mean, I think we have a lot of data, we have a lot of, um, designs, plans, thoughts, ideas, and, um, I think this is the, the, the use of that building is the one thing that drove us in one direction, and I think, I, I think that's one of the first important kind of, you know, we need to just get in the ring and duke it out, um, conversation that we need to have sooner rather than later. Yeah.
So, that would be a, sort of a town-wide discussion, you're, we're inviting the towns, and then, and then what goes on there? Does it, do we then sit in a meeting and discuss and decide?
Well, I, I, what I, I think, I think it should be a selectmen's meeting that we elicit input from, and it's more conversational. You jump in, Jack, because you, you were at the meeting earlier, um, that we, we do wanna hear from people, but I think we have to control the discussion so that we can come back on the eighteenth and really have some, where are we going? What are we doing? You know, are we recharging a committee, you know, that kind of thing? And what kind of theoretically is this project gonna look like?
So, and it's not, it's, it's also, how are we gonna program Old Town Hall? I mean, what are we gonna, what do we wanna use, how do we wanna use Old Town Hall? You know, we, we really never thought that through, I, I, and I think.
There were visions, but.
Yeah, there were visions, it was just, we just assumed we're gonna, we were gonna renovate the building, but we never really talked about how we were gonna use that building. And I think this is gonna help us, and we're hoping we'd attract other interests in town who have an interest in maybe working with the programming of the, the, the hall. I mean, you know, we just kind of ad hoc went at that, and, uh, you know, I just like encourage citizens who have an interest in thinking about how we could use Town Hall to show up at this meeting and voice their, uh, their, uh, their interest.
And just let me add, and then I'll get to you, Steve, I mean, one of the uses of Town Hall is what it is now, office space and an auditorium, or anything else.
For theater production and elections, you know, but maybe there's, you know, I, I think there are a whole range of issues we can.
And we made a decision last spring that there were, there were other possibilities, um, but I think we need to back that up with some real conversation and data, Steve.
Um, two things, I don't know where December fifth came from, I'm, I'm gone, I'm traveling, and, uh, there's no chance of participation.
Okay.
Second, the, the, the core of this comes down to the very nature of the project. Go back at it, uh, go back in time, it seems, it seems we do that a lot these days, because we go back in time, and the base of the conversation was, uh, effectively, is this one or two projects? Right? Is this one or two projects, is there, you know, are we going to use, first of all, is it one or two names? Is it Old Town Hall, is it historic structure, I don't know what it is, can you use that domain for office space? Does it make sense, is it logical, can it, can it effectively be used in that manner? And if not, is it its own project? And if it's its own project, what do you use the building for? I think we eventually settled on, as an objective last year, for the project that we had in mind last year. It was that that would be used, or could be used for civic and cultural uses, which effectively encompassed how it's used currently now outside of office space, but that's where it ended.
Right.
We had no further plan than that, or we had no further objective than that, and I, I, I know that, uh, there are other public resources that are used effectively both by the public and, and separately by private entities for the, you know, the good of the community. So, that really comes to the core of the project, is this one or two projects? Because if they're taken on in, in, in separate course, you, you are dividing not only their outcomes, which is potentially a very positive thing, uh, but you're also dividing their funding, which is also a potentially very positive thing, as you, as you all, as we all know. Um, working to renovate the historic structure brings into our wheelhouse a number of resources that we can't use for this structure. Okay, and that's, that's potentially a positive. Likewise, it also means that we may have to rethink how we allocate our real estate to run the town. Likewise, it also means that we may have to rethink how we allocate our real estate to run the town. Because it's very plausible that if you remove that office space, there really isn't enough space within these four walls. But it also brings up the question is whether or not we're actually allocating or using our, the space that we own effectively. Right? Do, you know, is one hundred Pond Street used effectively? Do we have the right, the right departments full-time at the senior center? Maybe that should be the home of social services. I'm only bringing these forward as conversation points, just things that I've thought of. You know, is it, is it possible that the space above the water department, completely unused at the moment, could be more effectively employed? Right? So, that, that's why this discussion becomes so critical.
So, so one of the things on the, on the timeline was to spend a very good amount of time at our December eighteenth meeting to, to discuss town hall and reaffirm or affirm or, or, you know, the goals that we set up, albeit kind of in the middle of the process, um, last time, and just kind of solidify that. So, this, this capital budget advisory chair, vice chair, um, Jack's been involved. Jason and Chris have been around, and we've been meeting every Tuesday night just to kind of, well, we didn't meet last week, but, you know, just, um, just to kind of toss around ideas and figure out what's, what's going. That's where we came up with this roof, possible roof plan. And, um, so we thought, we really need to have this conversation before we go too much further about, because we settled on a plan to use Old Town Hall. It, it put all the administrative buildings into this, this side, if you will, um, and use Old Town Hall, um, for, for cultural uses that we didn't really fully lay out or plan for. And we feel like we need to have that conversation. Does that make sense? If it does, what's realistic? What's it gonna, you know, what's it gonna cost? Are, do we, are we gonna have income? And we wanted to have that conversation before we, the board of selectmen, sat down on the eighteenth and really hashed out a plan in terms of timing. We need to have a deliberable of this then. And so we, it just so happened that a couple of the key players couldn't make it on Tuesday, December fifth, so we said Wednesday, December fifth. So, Tuesday, December fourth, we couldn't do it. So, right now, it's Wednesday, December fifth. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm traveling a lot in the next month, too, so dates are kind of few and far between, but, um, you know, that is open for some rediscussion if somebody wants.
One of the premises of what we're saying here is, is that the decision on what to do with the Old Town Hall is pivotal to the whole thing. That's really what you're saying.
Well, it is, right, because we, we had a, a bigger this side of the building, if you will, because we removed office spaces, so.
Is there anything else, if we're gonna have a discussion like this, are there any other pivotal things we want to try to take on? And just throw that out. What were the other?
I mean, we can certainly, you know, open it up for any public input that we get. Um, but I think the real crux is, and, and, and it became an issue all around, was that building. What, what's the possibilities for it?
So then how are we gonna decide that, though? I mean, I'm visualizing, yeah, so we'll have this public meeting, and then on the eighteenth, we'll come in and we'll essentially thrash it out and even have to bring it to a vote, so to speak?
Yeah, and I think we'll see, yeah.
We, we've talked about this together, selectmen. You, you know, what's changed is we got the information from the consultant as to what it would cost to renovate this building in Old Town Hall. You know, we didn't really define what the scope was, but they said, okay, if you were gonna renovate the two buildings so that they're functional and they're up to code, it's gonna cost us seven, is that what it was? Seven million dollars? You know, that's, that's a, that's a total figure. So that kind of set the base for what we, at a minimum, would have to do with these buildings. We, on the other end, we've spent a half a million dollars deciding what we could do with these two buildings if we were able to spend thirteen million dollars.
Which is what we presented last May.
Right, you know, and I'm, I'll be, I'll be candid. I think there's a solution here for what we should do. It's probably somewhere in the middle, right? We're not gonna, I, I personally think politically, we're not gonna get a thirteen million dollar project done. I just don't think it's gonna happen. But I do think there's a solution that's good and effective, and it's somewhere in the middle. Nobody's gonna get everything they want out of this. It's just not gonna happen. And we as selectmen, in a, in the system we have, we have to find, you know, a bargain solution for how we're gonna do this.
And we gotta listen to the voices, yeah.
So, I think a couple of things. One, we had three options that were put forth before. One was a higher-priced one, one was an intermediate one, one was a lower-priced one. I think the intermediate one is one option that we should reconsider. It takes some of the, um, administrative space and place in the Old Town Hall. I think dividing into two projects would be difficult from a funding point of view, because the economy scale would be better in one single project with funding from various sources. That's my opinion.
So, but all we're trying to do here, we're not trying to talk about options. We're not talking about options.
Can I finish, please?
We're just trying to create a frame. Let me just, let me just try to explain this.
No, could I?
We're creating a frame for talking about options. We're not talking about options.
All right, let him finish, please.
So, that's my view. I think we've been through several options before, and I think we need to revisit, because we've done a lot of work, and look and possibly modify some of those options that we've seen previously to come up with a price that is reasonable. Look for other options as far as, uh, other financial options are up.
Funding for the options.
Come down, thank you.
I, I do think that, again, that one, one, we settled on a plan, which was actually, you know, approved fairly well by town meeting, um, on a building, uh, design, that, um, there was still a lot of questions out there. So, this in a way is kind of trying to get those questions answered now. The question's being, do we really need a bigger this side of the building so that we can make available Old Town Hall for strictly, you know, more or less cultural and civic? Or is there an intermediate? And we do have plans. I don't want to, I don't think we need to talk about what we have already quite yet. I think we need to just say, what, what is the potential use for Old Town Hall? What makes sense? And then when we come back on the eighteenth, it is in our court. And this is, to me, this is giving voice to a lot of the questions that never got answered and, and ended up giving us some of the resistance that we got. I think we need to have that conversation, and then on the eighteenth, we will, as a board, discuss, you know, really, what are our goals, reaffirm what we discussed, or, or modify or whatever. Discuss where we want to go in terms of charging committees and, and populating those and, uh, and, uh, you know, just make some decisions to go forward. But I think if we've answered some of those lingering questions that still exist with the use of Old Town Hall, we'll be in better shape on the eighteenth to actually move this project forward, you know. And there's a whole, there's a whole lot of other stuff, but, right? Everything, every decision we make is gonna have an impact on time and budget. And, like, right now, I want to just, you know, solidify sort of a direction and try to answer the few questions that still remain. So, okay?
Um, yeah, just the last point. The first time I've heard about December fifth.
I know, I, we didn't, it was the first time I heard about it was an hour and a half ago, or three hours ago, or whatever time.
Which is something that's a good thing to do.
Before the eighteenth.
Before the eighteenth, that's all.
Right.
I, I, I am, I am out of state, far out of state, the fifth, well, that, Wednesday through Friday. So, I would, I'd like to participate. If it's the only date that can be done, fine, but I-
So, the following Tuesday, now, we were going for a Tuesday because we have standing meetings on Tues- standing, um, meetings on the town hall project on Tuesday. So, maybe we do the following Tuesday, because we are gonna have a meeting for, um, license renewals and everything.
It's on the eighteenth. Well, if you want to add a meeting, you mean?
The eleventh.
Right.
It's not, it's not an official meeting right now.
Right, but we've been discussing that because we have so much on the eighteenth.
Right. Well, the, the, that day is clear, so, but because we're trying to leave it clear.
Right. So, we could theoretically do, like, a six to seven thirty town hall, this discussion.
Oh, do you do that right here?
Yeah, do it right here. We were discussing doing it here anyway.
Because a nice touch would be to do it at town hall.
Right. Oh, right, right.
So, you might give your eleven, you asked.
With, like, the, when the ceiling tiles came in, we'll have the whole thing arranged.
It's actually a really good idea, you know that?
Are you available on the eleven?
Yeah.
Bring your, bring your parkas and-
I am.
Well, actually, he does work at the historic auditorium, believe it or not.
I just don't want to flood the heater and that.
The open fire and the oil cans.
So, are we, so are we proposing the eleven?
Let's do the eleven.
Okay.
The crew, which was, which was John Chapman and, um, Sam Wakeman today. They, I mean, they have Tuesdays blocked off at five thirty, so.
So, do you wanna agen, put some routine business on that as well to bang out maybe some of the annual renewals? Or you just want to do this for this?
Yeah, that's, we, wasn't it a discussion?
I, I, well, this is gonna be a, a big lift. Maybe we just keep it on this. If we get through this, it's a big deal.
I mean, you just remember, the eighteenth is gonna be full of the annual renewals. It's gonna take up a fair amount of time. I mean, it's not overwhelming. It's, but you have some open issues about some of these licenses you might want to be touching on, and they, there's highly likely there'll be some manager updates.
I would suggest splitting them, maybe putting, you know.
Yeah.
Because when you can't go out and you can't meet, when you couldn't get a meeting, it's probably not effective times.
I mean, I think, to be-
If the non-controversial ones put a badge, one with a badge.
All right, we could break them into two pieces.
Give ourselves a timeline to say twenty minutes.
Exactly. We, we have, and, and with respect to this particular town hall discussion, we, we do have to set a timetable on it. We can't go on all night long.
So, why don't we do, so, so why don't you do the selectmen piece from, like, six to seven? Bang that stuff out, and then do the committee from seven to nine? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Because I think, I think, then we get your business done.
That's, that's probably more community friendly.
Because if you, if you allow the discussion to go first, you may not get to the meeting until, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but again, I, I do think we need to, we, we need to have this town hall discussion limited to two hours or an hour and a half, however it is.
That's fine. And you have a hard stop at, uh, seven to eight thirty.
We just have to have a hard stop. It's, it's fair to the, it's only fair to the whole process.
So, six to seven, seven to eight, so six to eight thirty. It's a regular, your moving day cycle's gonna up an hour then. All right, and we got it, right?
All right.
Okay.
See if I can get around time, maybe late.
It'll just be the license renewals. We'll do all the easy ones first.
I'll vote twice.
Steve, he'll vote twice. He's got two hands. Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
I know, we're sorry. Um, I, I'm just gonna, selectmen goals and objectives. All I want to say is I did fill out my, what are they called?
Your, your-
VTO.
My VTO, and I will send it out, um, to everybody here and also to, um, to Deb, and then I recommend everybody do the same.
I thought we were gonna get a sample of that.
Yeah, that's my fault. I'll do it, I'll do it tonight. I'll send it out.
I did one, and I did it in Excel. I'll send you mine as a template.
Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna do mine on the VTO, and I'm just gonna-
We'll just do it so in a way that we should do it, so it'll look good.
Excuse me. Once again, uh, what does the acronym stand for?
Vision, traction, organizer.
Thank you.
The traction thing. So, stay tuned. Jack and I are on it. Um, eight thirty, ratify. Oh, we're not quick. If we go real fast, we'll be done.
So, I, I don't know if this was redistributed, but you did get this in the packet last time. Um, and Lou reminded me that the board does need to formally ratify this pending town meeting funding. And it was drafted by council, evidently, so, I'm recommending that you ratify this.
We didn't already.
No, you didn't formally vote on it. We talked about it, but you weren't thinking like-
Is there a motion? All right, there's a motion.
What's the motion?
To ratify the PNS agreement for five eighty-five Chief Justice pushing highway, pending funding for special town meeting.
Pending, pending, pending approval at special town meeting.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Last to be, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Town manager up the table.
Uh, just one.
Can I ask just one question? So, are we gonna do a little presentation for everybody as to why we're buying the parcel? Maybe, you know, put the parcel up on, you know, just so, otherwise I think we might run into a little bit of friction.
So, we do our annual, we're still trying to schedule this pre-tad meeting presentation on, uh, Montreux Three TV. Everyone seems to be away.
The one that you do?
Uh, yeah, so, um, we'll try to do something on that, too. That's, I'll see if we get some visuals.
So, who will do that, though? You?
Yeah, I do that with whoever's else.
I, I'll just have you, I think that's a good point.
Yeah, I'll make sure we have, we got, we have some nice giant maps and stuff, but, um.
Yeah, put on a little, you know, explanatory show.
All right. We'll talk about, with Dan, too, to make sure that Dan is good. The only thing I just want to, uh, uh, mention was, uh, thank you to, for everyone who participated in last week's, thanks for your service, uh, for the staff last Tuesday night. Uh, it was a great evening again. We rec, we recognize nine staff members who have served between twenty and twenty-five years, and then three folks will be retiring. Merrick Coughlin, who's been working in library technical services. Jackie Rafferty, who is the chief librarian, and Coral Grande, our elder affairs director. They're all retiring over the next two months. In fact, Jackie's last day with us is actually looming. I think it's this week.
Wow.
She doesn't actually retire until January, but she's bringing off vacation time.
Yeah.
Coral will be in mid-January, and Mary, I think, is the end of this year, so, uh, but thank you for, uh, everyone who participated, and, um, it was a great time. You were missed. No, you were-
I, I, I was very sad to miss it. Unfortunately, uh, we're cutting away, and I, it wasn't something I could do.
We had, we had a very nice crowd, and, uh, you know, I, I, again, I, there was a, I think it's become, it's now an established tradition after two years.
I did, I did send a note, um, and I understand that, uh, that Tracy's had some other larger things on her mind. But I'd send a note back to Tracy, if I could get, um, a list of the, um, long tenured as well as the retirees. I, I feel badly having missed it, but I would, at the, at the very least, like to send out a note to each of them. Mostly because I did miss it.
Yeah, I think I have the per, I used to do the program.
That'd be helpful.
Uh, but again, I wanted, it was, it was, it was a nice night, and, uh, we had a, we had a good time, so, uh, thank you very much, so.
That was, it was great. And I'm also, I think it's a great event.
So, um, we are interviewing two finalists for HR director this week. I met with one yesterday. Uh, well, many of us met, and we do another one Friday. So, we have two very high-quality finalists. I'm very excited. So, uh, hopefully have a s, a selection next week. We are competing with some other communities who are the same boat as we are, but it was one of those unique circumstances. I think we're very well positioned, so, uh.
Excellent.
I think, public sector, private sector, background, general?
Uh, well, um, I think they both have excellent backgrounds.
Excellent. Fair enough.
Excellent update.
And, and the library position?
So, we're, uh, we're working collab, we've been working collaboratively with the Board of Trustees and the Library, and the staff, and Jackie, and we're also gonna be bringing the Collins Center on. It's a very niche hire. So, I, we have to, I have to start back with Paula tomorrow. We are thinking about, because we have some savings in the, in the HR budget to bring the Collins Center on to do some very specific targeting and searching, because librarians are not, it's a very niche thing, and we really got a high-quality candidate. Elder Affairs, we're just starting the process with, with staff and the other. I did speak with members of the Elder Affairs Board Tuesday night last night, last week.
So, how does that work? I mean, those boards are the, they pick the person they want, right?
No, 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 no. The town manager's the appointing authority for all these. But we collaborate with the board, so we've done it with health, we've done it with planning. Yeah, the, the Elder Affairs Board is, is more advisory. The trustees of the library have a little more authority, but we're doing it collaboratively with them. So, they'll be, they're, they will be part of the review process. They have been part of the process with library, crafting the ad, reviewing the job description, so we've done, it's been a very collaborative process. It's been good. We'll do something similar with the Elder Affairs Board. And we've brought the staff in as well, because they have to work with whoever gets hired, so it's important to get their feedbacks. And we are not, the, the Elder Affairs world is, is tight, I'm told. I've talked to some other folks about that. Though we're in a different place. I mean, it's, it was very heartening to see the number of high-quality applicants for HR director. And these are people who've been watching what we're doing. They knew a lot about the town. So, this is a place that people are saying, hey, I want to work here.
Yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta help just to show them this, the well-called building, too, to say that this is the commitment that the town's made to it. It's gotta help attract, you know, as if I had thought of that.
And the library, too, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful library.
It's a nice place.
We have the largest, uh, we have the highest rate of, um-
Participation.
Yeah, at the library.
Withdrawals?
Withdrawal, yeah.
Checking out books.
Per capita, in, in the, in the old colony system. So, we, we have a very well-used library, and it's a beautiful facility.
Great facility.
And again, as you pointed out, Kevin, the Elder Affairs facility is also a beautiful facility. Uh, the HR director, Kenneth, has been very impressed by it, too, because I-
And this is the HR director's office right here?
Well, it, it, yeah, so roughly, keep it to our close.
Cleaning up the smart food packages.
So, so one of the things you will notice over the next week or two, um, we are gonna convert that into usable office space as best as possible, and there's no windows, and there's no HMAX, so it's gonna, Nick is gonna work magic.
Is that a place of punishment or?
And, uh, so we're gonna do the best we can. There's no other place. We have nothing else in the building. We're also gonna cover these. Uh, we're gonna put doors that have been long planned for this, those, just, you know, just bi-folds, which are very inexpensive. They got them at Home Depot. They're downstairs.
You could get, like-
Oh, I saw them down the basement, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they're gonna be, we're gonna, there's storage in there, so we gotta replicate it out here.
There's like some palm trees, and there's penguins you can get at Walmart.
I think we'll do seasonal decorations. We'll have a mural.
You know, it, it, I, I brought it up briefly- You know, it, it, I, I brought it up briefly beforehand, and it's one of the things that I would argue we can't do a better job with, is allocating our space. Someone actually had said this once, uh, with respect to the library, when the cry went out, we need more space, and I said, I can increase it by forty percent, you don't have to move a brick. How? Expand your hours, all right? Now, if you start rethinking about how we, we are using or maybe not using effectively the real estate we have, I, I, I humbly challenge you, you and your staff to think about that from that perspective. No offense, I understand we're restricted at the moment, but possibly rethinking how we allocate who is in this building and why, and who might not need to be, and I don't mean that in a, as a matter of favoritism, but a matter of function, right? And why, we might actually open up a boatload of office space simply by rearranging the pieces on the chessboard.
I appreciate that comment, um, we have done, in the last five years, we've done a fair amount of reallocation, and we, we put a lot, we've made a lot more fishing use of what we have. There are still limitations to what we can do at the moment, and there's pre-existing conditions that I, I, I'm loathe to upset in some circumstances. That said, I think we've done a really good job, and I, and believe me, if there was an other alternative here, uh, I would do it. But to break out this office in any other way would make this impossible to use in a.
Town meeting room.
It's, it's, it's exactly the, the, the good work that's been done up to this point that prompts me to make that observation.
Right, uh, and I, I, it's something we're taking a very serious look at, so we've actually done a little bit of reallocation recently to accommodate. Uh, one of the challenges is that there are some spaces that serve dual functions, like our, our server room is in office. So, uh, and I can't go anywhere right now, so, uh, so we have staff that are in there with the servers, uh, I mean, it's not gigantic, it's just a little rack, that means the air conditioning is going all winter, so it doesn't.
Right.
So, um, it, it's a point well taken, uh, and we'll do the very best we can to, to be adequate. So Nick promises me that there will be a window on that, um, that he can make that work, so if not, we won't spend any, we're talking about spending very minimal amount of money.
It's, it's not a matter of whether or not we convert this space, but rather that whether or not this is the ideal way to go about it. I know it's, I know it's expedient at the moment, but.
So, one of the things that the new HR Director, whoever, whoever selected will continue, is one of the traditions, at least it started partly out of, out of need, but partly because it was very effective, it was HR on the road. So she regularly met, uh, with, at, at DPW, and at Fire and Police, and at the library, and it was much more effective, 'cause folks don't have, you know, they're not gonna come here unless they're really desperate or in need. And, and this way that she brought programs, and she brought just approach, so it became HR as a service, as opposed to HR as the, you know, the all-powerful.
Department, yes.
Which, which has been very intriguing, by the way, so I, I think, um, that was part of the conversation we had with, with the, the candidates, and how important that was to continue that kind of, you know, come-to-you kind of service, you know, well, what's the bank where you see, they've re, reimagined their into a cafe?
Oh, I know, yeah.
Uh, I'm not chilling for a bank, it's like, this is HR reimagined too, you don't have to come to a cubicle and go sit with someone on a particular number, it's like, it's about being out there, so.
Right.
And, and again, I think people have been, were intrigued by that, that said, it's supposed to be a place they can meet from time to time, um, and close the door, and, and private conversations, I mean. The other alternative we turned into temporary space as well, yeah, well, we could, we could talk about all that, but I just wanted to give you updates on that.
No, that's great, great, okay.
Thank you.
Selectmen update, Steve?
Uh, I have nothing, other than, other than to say thank you very much for the, the folks who celebrated their anniversaries, and the three who are now retiring. Thank you.
Same with me, I was moved, I mean, I think it was a great event, and, uh, you know, we're lucky to have the people we have working for us, and this is a great way to acknowledge that. I hope we do it every year, we're running out of twenty-year, we're gonna start.
Right.
We'll have to figure out another way to do this.
I think the next year.
Four years.
We're gonna do something a little different next year.
Right, no, um, I don't have anything to say.
Uh, two quick things, one, um, at that meeting with all the retirees and all the longstanding employees, it really makes you realize how, when people come here to work, they enjoy working here, and they stay a long time, which is a testament to the town, um, the work experience that's here. Um, the other thing was, uh, the Red Line Inn is now under new management, and of course, every Thanksgiving I walk the dog, uh, Wednesday night, Thursday, Thursday night, Friday morning, Friday night. And there was not one single red solo cup up and down the street this year, which, uh, every year prior was, um, that's generally been my experience. So it seemed to be less of a concern, um, better control and better handle, which may be, uh, the light when I was walking the dog, so it just reemphasizes that I'm hopeful that this will be a great, uh, management.
I, I just wanna say I went to the Red Line for Thanksgiving with my family and some friends, and we had a great night, the food was fantastic, the, it was just, hit the fire going. It was really, really nice, just a little bit of effort goes a long way.
Welcome back, Red Line.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I've been to Red Line Inn too a few times, it's very, it's awesome.
Did you do those last two, but you did the minutes at the seven and on the eighth?
We did.
Done.
Yep, we did the minutes at the beginning of the meeting.
But I thought, I, I.
You were here.
No, I was here.
Were you?
Ten, nine, eleven, seven, eleven, eight.
Okay, you did them all three, okay.
Yeah, we did all three.
Right, sure.
Um, I do not have any topics, not reasonably anticipated, so just, uh, just what we just discussed, our upcoming meetings, um, we have special town meeting on the tenth. We'll probably post for an hour ahead of time, or a half hour, to, to go over that motion that we just sent along.
So you wanted us for six or six thirty?
Six thirty.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and then we have a meeting on the eleventh and on the eighteenth, and I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
I, look, we're on time.
We made it back, it was.